Okay, we would like to resume the May 1st, 2017 Board of Education meeting. I want to acknowledge that Kierak Laura has joined us at the board table. And if everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
We're the Pledges of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Next item on our agenda is accent on achievement.
Good evening, everyone.
Again, good evening, everyone.
Tonight, as part of the board's accent on achievement, the board would like to recognize some very talented students from Elgin High School who have again represented Elgin High School and the state of Illinois just this past weekend in the national competition. But first of all, we're here to celebrate their victory at the state competition. We're recognizing Jessica Agoyo, George Delgado, Yesenia Rosas, and Shelby Stoltz, who are all members of the Elgin High School Culinary Arts Restaurant Management Team. They placed first in the 17th Annual Illinois Restaurant Association Educational Foundation Pro Start Student Invitational. There you go. Their teachers are Cara Donash, Elizabeth Shemell, and Wesley Swanson, as well as former teacher and leader who is here with us tonight to celebrate their accomplishment. And they really had a really great business plan that I will encourage them to share with you all a bit later.
I'll read the certificate. This first one is for Jessica Awayo. If you want to come up here, you can. And it reads, "Certificate of Achievement, the Board of Education of School District U-46 hereby recognizes Jessica Awayo of Elgin High School for achieving first place as a member of the Restaurant Management Team at the Illinois Restaurant Association Educational Foundation Pro Start Student Invitational, presented this first day of May 2017." Signed by the Board President and the Chief Executive Officer. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And the second, next one is Jorge Delgado also. And I'm gonna pass on the reading of each one. And Yesenia Rosas. And Shelby Stoltz. We had a chance to, so let's give them a round of applause, please. So we had a chance to see their work. They had this proposal that we saw, or their project, and it's quite impressive. So I hope, if it's not available, I'm not sure how it's available, but it'd be great for you to check it out because there's quite a bit of work in there and I'm completely impressed. So congratulations to all of you for all your hard work.
I'm gonna pick on one of the students, so at least tell what your project was. What did you call it? And just a quick overview, who wants to be the victim here?
Okay, there you go. Well, this year's management team decided to think outside of the box and come up with a nonprofit restaurant. And this restaurant, what we would do is we would teach all our volunteers the basic job skills needed for a better life. And we would also give out free food for those who didn't have the means to afford it.
Anybody want to add in? Dispute what he said? No? Okay. Big red, I think we want to take a picture. So you want to come back over? How do you want us organized here? Thank you very much. Congratulations again. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Richard here with us. Do you want to step up, Richard? Our second accent is for in recognition of National Teacher Appreciation Week, which this year is May 7th through the 12th. And the board will present this proclamation of appreciation on behalf of all U-46 teachers for all that they do, for all the inspiration they deliver, the knowledge they impart, and their great effort to create exemplary citizens. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I will read the proclamation. The Board of Education, Elgin's Illinois School District U-46, proclamation of appreciation, National Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the U-46 Board of Education proclaims May 7th through the 12th, 2017, to be Teacher Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that School District U-46 Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our community to join with in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for that. I really appreciate that. I just want to say really quickly in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, that the, I'm lucky to be able to help and support what I consider to be the most talented and hardworking teachers in the state of Illinois. And that we look forward to working with the school board, Tony Sanders, district administration, and all these teachers to make every day better for every one of our students. Thank you.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda is Strategic Plan Report. Mr. Sanders.
Our Strategic Plan Report tonight is an update on health services. Coming forward to present is Dr. Suzanne Johnson, the Kent County Administrator of the Year, and also our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Mr. Jeff Judge, Health Services Supervisor, Ms. Deanna Dial, Certified School Nurse, Ms. Patty Kenyon, Certified School Nurse over at Elgin High, and Julie Alsta, also a certified school nurse.
We're just clarifying who's driving tonight. So good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide an update on our work around guidelines for anaplexia and allergic reaction, and also our communication plan for first day exclusion.
And through the U-46 strategic plan, we do identify the areas that we will be addressing as a student achievement, effective, and engaged staff, community engagement, and excellence and efficiency and accountability. So we do touch on all areas.
Excellent. The first part of our presentation is allergies and anaplexia. It was our goal at the beginning of the year to establish a committee to create guidelines to support our current board policy. We were successful in establishing this committee, and we met biweekly from mid-September to March, and of course, we've been meeting sporadically on and off. Our committee members consisted of multiple U-46 staff, as well as parents who, in our district, who have children who attend their schools with allergies. Our guidelines were based on Public Acts from ISB and also the Illinois Department of Public Health, specifically guidelines for managing life-threatening food allergies in Illinois school. Our committee, of course, we try to focus on following the guidelines. We, one of our goals was to be inclusive for anyone and everyone who may come in contact with our students, including their entire day from school, transportation to and from school, and then also including after-school activities. We wanted to be clear that roles were defined so that it would be easy for each person to find their role and their responsibilities in regards to allergies and anaplexia. And it was also important that we included not only the day-to-day, but how to respond to emergent situations as well. So I think we presented, and everyone should have gotten a copy, so hopefully you've had time to review our guidelines. We're very excited that we were able to achieve this.
So as Mr. Judge indicated, you have those guidelines to be able to review, and certainly we were able to respond to questions either tonight or another time, should that necessitate some additional follow-up. Additionally, the work within health services this year was also to review our first day exclusion communication plan. And so once again, we started meeting earlier on in the school year, and we had a very inclusive committee group that came together to provide feedback and help deliver direction to best support students in all sites. And certainly, those committee members included not only ESC administration, but also our health services experts, including our certified school nurses from variety of all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, as well as administration from sites.
Currently, U-46, our board policy states, and I'll just do a quick summary, that if noncompliant with the state requirements, exclusion will occur immediately on the first day. We also state that newly enrolled students will have an additional two-week grace period, and students who register after October 15th will receive an additional 30 days to become compliant. This is obviously based on long Illinois State Code. Two of the main ones, we did want to point out, that our current, the Illinois State Code requirements does state, the requirement shall be met in proof submitted by October 15th or an earlier date established by our school district, which U-46 currently has first day exclusion. And the second one is that two years at any combination, that a school district must comply with the percentage rates, meaning that we must meet a minimum state health requirements over our student body population. Our goal is 90% minimum compliance per the state. Of course, our goal is always to not only meet that compliance, but to start off the first day of school with healthy and immunized protective students, of course. We, of course, our main purpose of this was really not about the board policy, but really to establish a communication plan so we can best serve not only our students, the community, and the board. So Patty Kenyon is going to start discussing our current communication plan.
So communication has already started. Every family that has required elements for next year was sent home letters in March, also in April, and there'll be another set of letters that go home in May. We'll do Facebook updates, connect ed messages, June and July over the summer when we're not in our buildings, those people will like being on connect ed messages. not in our buildings, those people will like me and them, connect ed messages. When we return back to school in August, we'll start contacting those parents directly.
Then when we come back in August, we'll be using all the media that we were using before, but try to make that personal connection with families. And I'd like to point out that when we do call them, we try to assist families to overcome any obstacles that they're facing in getting their children immunized and their physicals.
Yeah, and of course, our last, our last part of the communication is actually the first day of school. We've developed, I think, a pretty comprehensive plan to reach out to parents and make sure that everybody is notified of the exact expectations as required by the state, but also to provide them plenty of time to plan. The first day of school offers us another opportunity to make those direct one-on-one or face-to-face conversations with parents, so that again, we can answer questions, provide further information, assist families, problem solve. If after that point, then the RN in that building would notify the administrator in that building, and again, offer a second opportunity on that very day to come up with a plan and assist and problem solve, so we can meet as many, have as many students compliant as possible.
So again, we thank you very much for your time this evening to be able to provide an update to the board and to provide an update on our communication plan and moving forward. As always, our goal is to provide a safe and nurturing environment for all of our students, beginning definitely on the first day of school, with some of our new practices.
So just a quick touch back before we, I know the board will certainly have questions. First of all, since we're on the collusion piece, it has been the case for years that U-46 has a policy, the board has always had a policy, that says we exclude students on the first day of school if they're not new to U-46, if they've not received all their required vaccinations and physical examinations, right? The challenge becomes as the first day of school arrives, especially when we move the start date back a little bit, getting families to comply with that and actually show up. So there's, every year, we would kind of disregard board policy to some extent to allow families, because we do not want to send families home from school, students home from school. The purpose of this presentation is to make sure that the board knows this year, we are going to live by that deadline of the first day of school. However, we put in place a really strong communication plan, so that families know that their child will be excluded on the first day if they don't comply. And so for all of our YouTube watchers, that will be the case this year. Make sure you get your doctor's appointments done now. And this is becoming more and more important, as we see Mumps cases across school districts and other infectious diseases that could be prevented if students came to school fully prepared.
And of course, in response to that as well, as we receive questions from sites or families or community groups and members at this time as well, we are able to provide additional resources and support. So if we're aware of challenges that either communities or families or sites need to overcome, then we can certainly work as a proactive team to try to provide those resources sooner than later for all of our students.
And then on the second piece, the, actually, the first piece, was the allergy and anaphylaxis. Mr. Judge, could you walk through then the protocol for the administration of an EpiPen under our guidelines? So if we do have a student that is exhibiting symptoms of anaphylactic shock, or what is the process the nurse or staff would follow?
Currently, we, you know, it's driven by the physician. You know, students have EpiPens as prescribed by their physician, with very specific orders on what their symptoms would be and when to administer. So we have them, you know, two students usually, not only have one, but two as a backup in each school, and you know, we've developed a plan early on that's specific to that student. We try to, every nurse is aware, care plans are written, we have everything ready to go. And with our new guidelines, we're working stronger in sharing that communication, so not only is the nurse, but the, and the administrator, but everyone who's involved with that student is going to be aware.
And in the event of a student allergy that we did not know about, is there, the emergency protocols are also built into this?
Yeah. Yeah. Currently, we do have a plan, and we're working towards strengthening the plan. I mean, we, and if an undiagnosed student does have an emergency anaphylaxis, we, and this has happened once this year already, is that we have had to commandeer from another student, we administered an EpiPen in an emergency situation. Of course, the 911 was on the way, and that was a very successful event. The student was diagnosed upon arriving to the emergency room, and now has her own EpiPen. So, and we're working, we're moving towards, once we've established these guidelines, and we're moving towards getting undiagnosed EpiPens in our district as well.
This is also part of our professional development plan currently for all of our staff, so it is one of the required GCN trainings for all staff. It's also part of the training menu and requirements for our health services, and it is already on our draft agenda for our legal update for administration as well for next year.
Are there any questions, Sue?
Going back to the EpiPens, how many instances have we had in the past year, would you say that we've had to use them? Is it common? Is it, is it only once, once a year maybe? Do you have any, I know I didn't send this in advance, so I know you can't give me the exact answer.
That's okay. I only know of five cases this year.
Okay, okay.
So it's pretty rare. I mean, most, we're fortunate that our families and students are very educated on their allergies, and our current practices have allowed to, we haven't had any major events, so we've been very fortunate on that. So hopefully, we can minimize that to zero.
Right, but thank you. And for the first day exclusion, if we had enforced our policies last year, how many kids would we have excluded, do you know? I mean, I know, I apologize for not getting this question to you in advance.
We'll have to follow back up with a specific number in a memo.
Okay.
But we will do that.
Okay.
Tracy.
I'm just curious, so for current students who are re-enrolling each year, they'll be first day excluded if they don't have evidence. For new students, they'll have a two-week grace period. But for new students who register after October 15th, they have a 30-day grace period. What's the, why is that, just out of curiosity?
That's currently the way our board policy is written.
Right, but I'm assuming that it had, maybe it, I shouldn't assume that it had a rhyme or reason, I won't make that assumption, but I'm just wondering, is there something that triggers for when you enroll after October 15th, that you'd need more time?
Outside of the first day exclusion piece, I believe that our policy mirrors state law. We'll have to double-check that, but I'm pretty sure it probably mirrors state law.
You know what? It's, I just.
The language is exactly the same.
It was just out of curiosity, so no need, no follow-up needed.
Veronica?
I have a few questions with regard to the exclusion. I read on that ISBE slide that it said if they don't submit the information by October 15th, or an earlier date as determined by board policy. So our policy obviously is on the first. But do you have any, and I'm going to ask this of board members, you know, board members who have been here, or Mr. Sanders, do you know why we have picked the first day exclusion as opposed to allowing it through October 15th?
I am not aware. It's been that way since, I don't recall seeing it change while I've been.
Okay. And I will, I will freely admit, I am a parent who had to deal with this last year, because, and somehow, I completely missed in all the different communication, that my child was going to be one of these children, and I didn't realize it until that first day of school. So I was completely shocked. And I'll tell you that I was glad that we, that we didn't hold hard and fast this year, in that I immediately called my pediatrician, and it was going to be two weeks before I could get an appointment. Now, I have an established relationship with my pediatrician, and I can make that appointment. And had I paid attention or figured it out earlier, I would have made that earlier, right? But then I think of all the parents who may not have an established relationship, or where they're going to go get their forms, and we're not going to give them a grace period. We're basically saying, you show up on the first day of school, you didn't realize it, or you didn't get the communications in the, over, you know, the earlier part of the, you know, the end of the year before, or realized that the connect ed message applies to you, and now your child is out of school, maybe for a couple of weeks. So I do, I am very concerned about the idea, I know that your presentation tonight was not about changing the policy, it was about a communications plan, but I hope that we would look at this policy as a board and consider revising it, because I think we're doing a disservice to our students. You know, it takes a lot of time and effort to connect with those families that didn't realize it, or aren't getting the communications, or just not following through, or don't have the means. And when staff come in just one or two days before the start of school, that is not enough time to get through to all those students whose families didn't follow through. I'm one of them. So I really worry about that, and hope that we as a board would consider looking at that policy again, to give it a little bit more time. And I hope that the communication plan, you know, it doesn't, it really doesn't have that one-on-one portion until the start of school. And that's almost too late. It is too late, it was too late for me. You know, I'm just lucky that we didn't play hard and fast, even though we were trying to as a district. So I just feel very strongly about that, and hope that we could look at this again.
And I believe there's a process in place if a family does have, say, it gets to the point where they just have not scheduled the pediatrician appointment, that once we know that that's scheduled, do we have any grace period once that happens?
I've been in close communication with the state itself, the people that actually make the laws themselves, and their definitions, I mean, we've been trying to mirror those. I mean, we do work with families, we understand with insurances, especially with the new Obamacare or HMOs, that people might have a difficult time getting an appointment, and in those cases, because they have no other options, of course, we would work with them on, and if they have a scheduled appointment, so that would be considered by the state as being quote-unquote "in progress," because we're working with someone and they have no other From what I've been told directly from the state itself, that if you have other means, and you've received those notifications, that, you know, you have other options, and they would prefer you take those other options, if you have a freer insurance or a private insurance.
We really do, though, to the point from Ms. Nolan, so while this is the communication plan, there's also a work plan that's behind us that is not shared this evening. We could share that additional work plan. But that component of the personal follow-up and direction and assistance, we do try our best to work one-on-one with families or community groups as well, to try to get resources to families. Certainly, that process has changed greatly over the last several years. And so we do try to avoid blanket statements or communication statements to our entire community, because we find that that may not be accurate, pending family needs and family resources as well. So again, we do try to follow up one-on-one to be able to direct families to the best appropriate resources to try to resolve any challenges or conflicts with meeting the requirement as soon as we possibly can, and as soon as they possibly can. Again, the goal is to have students in class as soon as we can. And so with that work plan, we do have other means and additional options, and additional layers of staffing and support and resources throughout the summer as well, to try to be as successful as we can.
And I, I'm sorry, I still have another question for the, about the EpiPen. Is that okay? You had mentioned that you're working to get undiagnosed EpiPens, you mean ones that don't, aren't assigned to a student? And are you, is that, I was curious if you're having trouble with that. I know that recently, the costs have skyrocketed on the EpiPens. And then my other question is, and I, this may be in your plan, and I don't know, but is there a process in place for making sure that they stay up to date? And I asked that only because there was recently a recall, and we have one, and you know, we have to follow through on that. So I just wondered how you'll be handling that.
Yeah, actually, yes, we're very careful with the EpiPens. I get the notifications on a regular basis, and communications go out immediately to the buildings and the nurses. They, they contact each and every parent. First, they check the EpiPens to make sure that they're the brand, if they're the ones that are expired or being recalled, they contact the parents immediately. In almost every case, the pharmacist has a backup available, so, and they can, the parent just has to come in and exchange those, so, and we keep very tight control on that, because we would never want an EpiPen to fail during an emergent situation. The second part with the undiagnosed, that's for students who have known-on allergies, that there is a state law out there that says that we can't administer, any of our, U-46 personnel can't administer, if they feel that a student is having anaphylactic reaction, can't administer an EpiPen. Currently, there's companies offering free pens, because you're right, they are very expensive, currently they're $649, because I just checked a couple days ago. So they're quite expensive, and it requires two of those, and to have them, we have to have two, two of the regular EpiPens and two of the EpiPen Juniors, so you're talking quite a lot of money to keep this stocked in your school. But the companies are offering free pens with programs. One of our, we're working on our nursing practice guidelines for this. And the other part of this, we can't administer anything in our district unless we're, it's prescribed by a physician, so I'm working to obtain a physician who would write a general physician order for an entire district. So that's something in progress, so I'm really quite excited. Myland, which is a company, has offered us an opportunity for the EpiPens, and I'm working with them currently, and it's a pretty substantial donation on their part, considering we have to have four of them in every single building.
Yes, I also wanted to mirror Veronica's comments regarding first day exclusion. I don't know the rationale of previous boards who approved board policy 7.100, but I would like to see our policy mirror state law. Like, why do we have to be more stringent than state law? As a board, I'd like us to look at that.
Any other comments, questions?
So can we put that on the agenda for next meeting, or?
We're going to be going over all policies.
Okay. So when can we look at this one?
We'll get committees and set up dates and.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
I'd just like to say thank you to the teams. Thank you for all the work you put into it for both, both sets of teams. Appreciate all the extra hours you put in.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comments.
Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Education. We are not the public comment period of the meeting when the board listens to issues and concerns, but does not respond to statements. As stated in our board welcome flyer, we ask that you complete a request to speak card. Each speaker will be allotted up to three minutes. A tone will sound when your time is up, and if you wish to have a written reply to your concern or question, please check the box on the card, and a written reply will be mailed to you.
Okay. There are no public comments, so the next item would be other business, board member and CEO update. I'll start with, where is Dr. Johnson? Stand up, please. We were at the Kane County Educator of the Year banquet last Friday night, where we celebrated Dr. Johnson winning the Administrator of the Year Award for Kane County. Great job, thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, there are other staff members who are nominated. I know several teachers, paraprofessionals, and the principal at Independence Early Learning Center, and then a paraprofessional from Elgin High School also was nominated. So it's great to have U-46 represented across the board.
And we can't forget there were a number of U-46 retirees there that we were celebrating also. Does, I'm going to allow someone to talk about the scholarships, maybe? Because they were.
Okay, so last week was a busy week with scholarship receptions, and the first one I attended was Tuesday night, Tuesday, Wednesday, no, at Larkin High School. Gary, when was that? Tuesday? Tuesday? Those Who Excel Scholarship, that was Tuesday night, with the Those Who Excel Scholarships presented by the ETA, and I had the opportunity to speak to the students and about their futures. I also recognized sixth graders for being leaders in their schools, and so there were, how many kids altogether? You know? Many. Yeah, every, each elementary. Yeah, every, each elementary school had one to three sixth graders that were nominated as leaders in their schools, and so they were recognized, as well as the graduating seniors who received scholarships. Then Wednesday night, last week we heard about the networking workshop that I do for the superintendent scholarship recipients each year. So that was the, two weeks ago, and last Wednesday night at Elgin High School was the reception for those scholarship winners, where we celebrated them, and they got a chance to meet administrators in the district, as well as some donors, and practice their networking skills. And then Saturday night, well, we were all at Elgin High as well, but Saturday night, Donna and Sue and Tony and I were at Villa Olivia for the United Black Scholarship banquet. It was their 31st annual banquet, and 41 scholarship recipients were awarded scholarships that night, and just some outstanding students doing awesome things. I mean, holding down 4.4 plus, 4.0 plus GPAs while involved in 12 extracurricular activities, and volunteering in the community, and part-time jobs. I don't even know how they do it, but, and my brother and I had the opportunity to present two $2,500 scholarships, Ronald D. O'Neill Memorial Scholarships on behalf of our family. And while I said, as I say every year, I would like nothing more than to be, to not be giving out memorial scholarships in memory of my dad, we were very proud of the students who were selected for those two scholarships, and my family is, and I are just really proud to continue to support U-46 in every way possible.
The only thing I'd want to add is, at the superintendent scholarship reception, there were 35 students who received scholarships.
Each $1,000.
Yeah.
Each $1,035, so that's the largest we've had, right, Tony?
It's the biggest one.
Biggest one. The bar has been set.
Students now receive scholarships through it.
Awesome.
Sue?
And just to add, and I'll agree with Tracy, it's just wonderful seeing all these kids who get these scholarships. And I believe there's a video, I'm not sure it's on the district website, is it on the superintendent's scholarship, which is well worth watching. Yeah, this is really, as Tracy said, a really incredibly busy time of year. I was at Larkin for their Career Tech Ed Awards last week, and again, awards for kids doing automotive, for computer, for business, for childcare, or not childcare, education. So that was, that was a lot of fun, seeing those kids and their families. The volunteer reception for all of our volunteers, it was huge this year. We had a big group. That was last week as well, so everyone from CAC to other groups as well, BPA, the bilingual parents, Kids Hope United, yes, so that was a lot of fun. And I have to do my plug for, the last musical I saw this year was Little Shop of Horrors at Streamwood, they did a great job. If you have not seen the U-46 High School musical, go next year, it's wonderful. Thanks.
Keith? Eric?
Good evening, everybody. Sorry. Last Tuesday, April 24th, I attended the annual volunteer reception here at the district office. I was just moved by the acts of three individuals who knitted 566 hats for the students of Hillcrest Elementary School. That's truly inspiring, and I applaud them for the impact that they made on those kids. Last Wednesday, I attended a political forum in ISU with fellow SHS students on an overnight trip. We stayed at the Marriott, we couldn't go pursue their pool, though, a little upset about that. Anyhow, we were the only U-46 students representing, and most of us took a position in presenting a different policy of the, for the US. At the end, they welcomed students to the podium, and I ran up to throw in a quick comment about the budget crisis we have in the state right now. I said, in essence, we all come from different parts of the state, but this affects us all. If the lawmakers don't come up with something soon enough, our schools will close. They need to get something down, down there. And I dropped the mic, metaphorically. Tomorrow is Hannover Township Celebration of Leadership, but I won't be here to tell you about that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
If we get a bill for the mic. Just saying.
Tony? That was it? Okay. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
On the consent agenda, we have personal report and workers' compensation cases, a contract renewal with information services, maintenance agreement with SolarWinds, a bid for plant operations, Illinois Park Curly Learning Center paving, parking lot, and drives, and finally, building permits for both Illinois Parks, yeah, for the Illinois Park project.
Okay, does any board member wish to remove any of the agenda items off the consent Hearing none, can I have a motion for the consent agenda for May 1st, 2017? So moved. Sue?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Ms. Gert?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Discussion action, Mr. Sanders?
Our first item under discussion action are itemized bills of May 1st, 2017. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the list of bills in the amount of $3,907,719.69. And if there's any questions, Dr. King is here to respond.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the itemized bills for May 1st, 2017, in the amount of $3,907,719.69?
So moved.
Second?
Sue? Any discussion, question? Roll call, please.
Ms. O'Neill Ellis?
Yeah.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Ms. Gert?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Our next item is the final 2016-17 school calendar. Every year, the board at this time has to approve the final calendar for the current school year that recognizes any days it had to shift around as a result of weather or other uses. We did have one emergency day that was used December 19th, 2016, which results in this school year being extended by that additional day. So that means the last day for students will be May 30th, 2017, and May 31st will be a teacher institute day as a result. Administration recommends adoption of the final calendar.
Could I have a motion to adopt the final calendar for 2016-17?
So moved.
Veronica? Tracy? Any discussion?
So I have a question. So previous to this one snow day, we would have ended on Friday, May 26th, before Memorial Day holiday, right? And now, not.
Correct.
Sadly, I just wanted everyone in the room to understand why that was.
Sadly, the students will recognize that this means we can't take any more snow days for the rest of the year.
Yes, I hope students will, will understand that for next year. With Tony Maloney.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Ms. Gert?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Sadly, yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill Ellis?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Our next discussion item is driver education curriculum proposal. This was brought forward at the last meeting as a work session item. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the driver's education curriculum proposal, and if you do have additional questions, Dr. Johnson is here to respond.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the driver education curriculum proposal?
So moved. Second?
Veronica? Any discussion? Roll call?
Ms. Gert?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Our final discussion action item is the welding curriculum proposal. This, again, was brought forward at the last meeting, and is returning under discussion action tonight. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the welding curriculum proposal.
Could I have a motion to approve administration's recommendation to approve the welding curriculum proposal?
So moved.
Second.
And Cody? Any discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Ms. Gert?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Other business, CAC update.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Hop, and I'm here tonight to deliver the CAC update. Our next general meeting is Thursday, May 4th, that's this Thursday, at Elgin High's newly reopened library, we're back in the library, at 7:00. This week, the committees will be presenting their year-end reports, and we will be electing our new officers. So we are urging all of our member schools to make sure that they have a representative there that evening, so that we can make quorum. Also, today, earlier today, all of our members should have received an email, and inside the email is our year-end survey, and we encourage everyone to participate in that survey, because it's a really important tool for the executive committee in planning the next year's activities. Any questions, or?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You too. Other business, Mr. Sanders?
Every year at this time, Andy Martin, our Director of Transportation, appears before the board to update you on our agent obsolescence plan for bus replacement. This year, we didn't want to make any exceptions to that rule of Mr. Martin presenting the A&amp;O plan, but I would note that you will see a recommendation in here that, at this time, we cannot, we will not have the fiscal ability to fund. So with that, we still will have the update with no money being spent, so, Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Good evening. The A&amp;O plan, the Agent Obsolescence Plan for the Bus Replacement has been in effect since 1985. The plan was formally adopted by the Board of Education in December of 2001. There are several objectives to the plan, and I'll go through some of them. First and foremost is to operate buses that are mechanically and structurally sound, have all buses with less than 150,000 miles or 10 years of age, balance the purchase, so we have similar number of buses purchased throughout, from year to year. The Bus Replacement Plan actually takes the entire fleet through a 10-year cycle, and that, again, is for the both large and small. All of our large and small buses are now diesel-powered, and with that, we've been able to take the plan and move it from a seven-year to a 10-year rotation. There are six different attachments in the Agent Obsolescence Plan. Those six attachments are included, and I'll go through them just briefly. We do, as Mr. Sanders mentioned, we do have a recommendation to extend or secure pricing for 18 large and 20 small buses. The 20 small would be 15, 30 passenger units with five lift buses. Moving on to Attachment A, that is the modified summary page that takes the entire fleet of 350 buses through the 10-year cycle I mentioned. As you can see, it identifies the large, the small, and then to the far right, it identifies a equal number, a pretty close number of balanced buses purchased each year. Currently, we are operating, as I mentioned, 350 buses. With the recommendation here, we would, again, start next school year with 350 buses if a recommendation of purchase was to follow through. Attachment B is actually the details to the previous page I covered. It outlines the 184 large buses, identifying which year each one is scheduled to be traded or leaving the district. Attachment C is the same, identifying 166 small buses, there again, just identifying all the details of which bus is scheduled to go each year. Attachment D of the plan outlines the 18 large buses that we would recommend to be traded in on the, on the new purchase in 2017. And Attachment E is a small bus schedule for replacement, outlining the year, the miles, and those that are recommended to be, would be recommended for trade this year. The last and final Attachment F gives some history of what we've done over the past 10 years. It identifies the growth of the fleet over the past 10 years, and then it also identifies over the course of the last 11 years, the acquisition cost that we have, we've had within the department and to replace the buses of the A&amp;O plan. So with that, that concludes the, going through, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sorry, are there any questions?
Sue went first. Okay. If we were to purchase buses this year, what would the cost be? I mean, if we were to follow this plan, ballpark figure?
I would estimate it somewhere around $3.4 million.
Okay.
The IH is International Harvester, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
I do not know what the IC stands for, what is that?
That is, that is the IH product, but it's the, the new product where the entire vehicle is made as one.
Okay.
Where years ago...
So it's basically the same?
It's the same thing, yes, it's just a different model.
How do we decide how to, I mean, that make as opposed to somebody else? I mean, has there been studies as to this being the best manufacturer?
It's, it's been done through the bidding process.
Okay.
Through a low bid.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So in other words, the lowest bid meeting specifications?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And you're out early tonight.
I know, just caught me off guard today.
Usually it's 10:30 when you end.
I know, thank you very much.
Andy, while we have you here, can I just say thank you for your many years of service to the students of U-46?
Absolutely, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is approval of closed session minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the closed session minutes for August 15th, 2016, September 12th and 26th, 2016, October 3rd and 17th, 2016, November 7th and 21st, 2016, December 12th, 2016, January 9th and 23rd, 2017, February 6th and 27th, 2017, March 6th, 13th and 20th, 2017, April 3rd, 10th and 24th, 2017. And the following closed session audio would be April 20th, 2015, May 4th, 11th and 18th, 2015, June 15th and 22nd, 2015, July 20th, 2015, August 3rd and 17th, 2015, September 14th and 28th, 2015, October 5th and 19th, 2015, November 2nd and 16th, 2015, and December 14th, 2015.
So moved.
As part... When?
I went too fast.
As part of the motion, there, I would request that the need for confidentiality still exists as to all or part of closed session minutes, and therefore, all closed session minutes, with the exception of the minutes already released, including audio recordings, remain confidential. In addition, all the audio recordings more than 18 months old, having been put into writing and approved, may be destroyed, the dates that I previously read.
So moved.
Veronica? Tracy? Any discussion? Jeanette?
So I'll be voting no on this, because of those closed session audios that may be destroyed. I believe that we should be having a conversation, what parts of those can be released to the public, and therefore, I don't want them destroyed.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Ward?
No.
Mr. Costello?
No.
Ms. O'Neill Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
No.
Ms. Gert?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Four three.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is recognition of our student board member. If you would join me in front, Eric. Eric, we're gonna miss you. We're gonna miss your questions, we're gonna miss your student perspective. We're gonna miss you. And I've already told Eric, and he is to remember that he needs to email me and keep me up on what he's doing, where he's at, and how he's doing. And he's going to come and visit us when he's home from school.
I'll visit him, one more in Springfield.
Okay, good idea. So tonight, we have, okay, hold this for me. We have a plaque for his door at college. What do you think?
I love it.
Okay. And we also have a plaque that says, Eric Laura, "As the eighth student serving on the U46 Board of Education, we thank you for your dedication and applaud you for your faithful and committed representation of those who serve our students. Congratulations and good luck."
It's not over yet. I guess somebody already dropped it, is it? Can you guys hear me well? Is it working? Okay, good. To be honest, I'm a little nervous. I've publicly spoken before, but it feels like just the first time. So, since I've drawn quite the crowd today, I'll make sure I make this speech memorable. Last year, May 2nd, 2016, I took Allison's seat on the Board of Education. Before she parted, her advice to me was to always remember who you're fighting for, the students. Over the course of this short year, I have learned so much from this position. Serving on this board showed me the realities of the real world. Going to events, meeting wonderful people from all across our communities, I've seen the many faces that make up U46. I will carry on these experiences as I continue my journey into college. To our district officials and school administrators, thank you for all your extensive efforts in creating the ultimate learning experience for our kids. Mr. Sanders, thank you for all the work you continue to do for us. Whether it's advocating in Springfield for equity or even just bringing levity to the room, I have not seen any other CEO more involved in our kids than you. I'm very fortunate to have had the chance to serve under you. Ms. Smith, it's been such a joy to know you. Thank you for your tremendous leadership on our board. To the rest of our board members, it has been a privilege to have served alongside. I have faith that you will continue to make the best decision for our students. Mr. Barone, not only have you been my avid teacher for the last four years, but you've been my school dad, a role model, someone I wanted to be like. You helped me find my purpose. Your students could always depend on you for anything. Ms. Maynard, my school mom, and I, oh, there she is, recorded me like a school mom would. You made all this possible, took me under your wing, the first one to truly believe in me. Unfortunately, you're parting on your next journey as you retire this year. I'm happy that I got to be your last success story. By coordinating the Avid program at SHS, you've literally changed students' lives, including mine. My friends, they kept me sane all these years, reminding me to still be a kid. Couldn't have survived without them. Finally, my parents, Ms. Brothers, they're the hardest working people I will ever know. It's funny, most of my involvement I kept hidden from them because I wanted to surprise them. Now, you know, like, your kid isn't really just an introvert who just plays computer all day, he's actually somebody. Mucha amor, I love you so much. Their unconditional love and support makes me forever grateful. When they seek a better life here, I knew I had to make them proud by taking the opportunities they could not. We're not all bad hombres. It is important, okay. It is important that as a district, we continue to celebrate our diversity. We can learn so much from one another when we build bridges, not walls. In the end, I surprised myself. My whole story was a product of the opportunities this district has provided. We need to focus on why we are all here, the students. Let me be an example. I was not built for this, believe me, but I wanted to be. Advancement via individual determination. All of you sitting here influenced me in some way that made me who I am. No matter how small the impact is, teachers, counselors, continue to inspire your students. They might just end up changing the world. I appreciate you all coming out to support me. It means the absolute world, and I hope I made U46 proud. It has been an honor to have represented the district. Casey, I believe you will do a tremendous job representing our students. You're in for a ride, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you, everybody.
Did you want to open up the board to say anything?
Before Eric leaves, does any other board member...
Thanks, Eric, for ruining my makeup tonight.
Eric will miss you, thank you very much.
Cody?
Eric, you're a bright young man, and you have a great future ahead of you, and I wish you all the best in your endeavors.
Eric, I just also wanted to give you my best. You can always count on me in your future endeavors. I can't wait to see the next Eric in our, the board here. So I wish you the best, and it's been a great time working with you.
Yes, indeed, all the best. Godspeed in college, don't drop too many mics.
Eric, as your fellow Latino on the board, it's been such a pleasure to serve with you. I'm so excited to see your future, and I hope you will stay in touch. I just am incredibly proud of you. So just stay in touch, please.
Can I just add, Eric, I'm gonna see you like all the time. So every time I've been to Springfield, and you still have one more CEO Student Advisory Meeting that you have to be at, because we have to do the haunted tour of the building, and you're gonna lead it this time, since you've been on it every year. And then beyond that, you didn't share with the board, I don't think you've ever shared, because you're too humble, where you're going and what you received in the way of a scholarship. So, yes.
Can we have him share that out? He's gonna go to my alma mater, I'm gonna give that away.
All right, I will be attending the University of Illinois at Springfield, and they have pretty much given me a full ride. I will be majoring in public administration, so just y'all are curious. All right, thank you.
Next, we will be swearing in our new student board member. If you would come up front.
Ms. Pierce, please say will after the following oath. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the officer member of the Board of Education of the School District U46 of Kane County, Illinois, in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of your ability? And further, do you swear that you shall represent all school district constituents honestly and equally and refuse to surrender your responsibilities to special interests or partisan political groups? Shall avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety, which could result from your position, and shall not use your board membership for personal gain or publicity? Shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by your fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board? Shall take no private action that might compromise the board or administration and shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels? Congratulations.
Welcome, Casey. Next item on the agenda is the canvas of votes.
The abstract of votes in Kane County, Illinois, at the consolidated election of April 4, 2017. There were, for Elgin School District U46, the number of persons were 149, the registered voters were 128,054, the ballots cast were 15,061. And for members of the Board of Education to serve a full four-year term, the vote getters, starting from the highest, Melissa Owens with 9,824 votes, Veronica Nolan with 9,195 votes, Donna Smith with 9,403 votes. The other two candidates, Enik Isandrop with 4,032 votes, and Mr. Holt with 5,710 votes.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve 2017 Consolidated Elections Abstract of Votes?
So moved.
Cody?
Go ahead.
You second, I have a correction.
Okay, second.
So the number of ballots cast were 15,601, not 15,061, just a correction to how it was written.
That's correct, 15,601.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call. Oh, Jeanette, were you shaking, yes? You had something to say?
No, that was my only discussion point, sorry.
Second was, Trey. Sue. Roll call, please.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms., let's see, and then Mr. Holt, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
So.
Okay. Next item on the agenda. Mr. Holt. Mr. Holt.
Look at that.
It's for your front door.
Awesome.
We just recognized Eric, who is our student board member, and, thank you. And you were a graduate of Larkin in 2010. When you were ran and elected to the board, you were 23?
Yes.
If I figured right?
Yep.
You served for two years, so 23, 24, 25 now?
Oh, yeah.
It's an extension of our students and getting involved, and you should be commended for doing that at that age.
Thank you.
It's, it shows our students an example of what they can accomplish and how they could be involved.
Thank you.
And we want to thank you for your years of service. I have a plaque for you, not only a door hanger, but a plaque.
Thank you.
Cody Holt, Board of Education, 2015 to 2017. Thank you for your service to the U46 community and students.
Thank you.
Mr. Holt, I wanted to add my thank you for your years of service to the school board. Before that, being in attendance at board meetings, I know that you're gonna be very actively involved, I'm sure, moving forward in the community and in U46 as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms...
I think it is.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Thank you, Madam President, for the kind words. It's been great to work along you all and the rest of my fellow board members during the past two years. This is obviously probably gonna be the last time that I address this room as a U46 school board member. As of today, I have served two years, and my goals when I decided to run in 2014 are still the same as they are today, to be a voice for reform, fiscal responsibility, and prosperity by adhering strictly to the principles of individual liberty. To the people of this district, thank you for allowing me the honor to serve as your U46 school board member. As a former student of the district and actively engaged citizen, there is nothing that compares to representing your fellow citizens on a governing body. One of my heroes, the late and great Senator Barry Goldwater, once said, "I have little interest in streamlining government or in making it more efficient, for I mean to reduce its size. I do not undertake to promote welfare, for I propose to extend freedom. My aim is not to pass laws, but to repeal them. It is not to inaugurate new programs, but to cancel old ones that do violence to the Constitution or that have failed their purpose or that impose on the people an unwarranted financial burden. I will not attempt to discover whether legislation is needed before I've determined whether it's constitutionally permissible. And if I should later be attacked for neglecting my constituents' interests, I shall reply that I was informed that their main interest is liberty, and in that cause, I am doing the very best I can." That quote itself eloquently describes my philosophical foundation and the way I approach the issues while governing in office. I know that the majority of American citizens prefer their government limited in scope as not to intrude into their lives or pocketbooks. It is still my opinion that many things in this district need to change and that it should not be business as usual. I am still shocked at the massive amount of power and influence that organized labor has in the governing and negotiating power of our school district. Taxpayer funds should never be used against the taxpayers. I'm also gonna take this time to ask the Illinois Legislature and Governor to pass a balanced budget with reforms. Speaker Madigan and Illinois Democrats have manufactured this crisis by refusing to compromise or meet Governor Rauner on middle ground. The people of our district and state deserve a balanced budget with reforms. It's time to fix Illinois now. In closing, this moment takes me back to when I was getting sworn into office two years ago. The outgoing board members had stern words for some of the incoming board members. Tonight, I offer nothing but well wishes and prayers for Melissa Owens and the rest of my colleagues, and I think it's about time that Melissa Owens and I change seats, so. Thank you all, and God bless you.
Is this? Oh, that's Eric. Okay, the next item on the agenda is swearing in of the new board members.
Ms. Nolan, Ms. Smith, Ms. Owens, please come forth.
Ms. Nolan, Ms. Smith, Ms. Owens, do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Members of... the duties of the Office of Members of the Board of Education of School District U-46 of Kane County, Illinois, in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of your ability? And further, do you swear that you shall respect taxpayers' interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school's district's assets, shall represent all district constituents honestly and equally, and refuse to surrender your responsibilities to special interests or partisan political groups, shall avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety which could result from your position, and shall not use your board membership for personal gain or publicity, shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by your fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees, shall take no private action that may compromise the board or administration, and shall respect the confidentiality of privileged information, shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that the decisions can be made by majority vote at a public board meeting, and shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels? Do you swear?
I swear.
Congratulations. So historically, the Board of Education is adjourned since, year after the Canvas of Votes and the announcement of the new Board of Education members. In March of 2011, we were advised by IASB that this was no longer needed. They had been recommending the school board's unadjourned since, year after the announcement of the winners, but rather continue the Board of Education meeting by using the following process: announce that the Board of Education will reconstitute it, give the oath of office to the new Board of Education members, hold the role with the new Board of Education members, and conduct the election process for Board of Education officers. So we're going to start with roll call. Mr. Costello?
Here.
Ms. O'Neal Ellis?
Here.
Ms. Kerr?
Here.
Ms. Nolan?
Here.
Ms. Owens?
Here.
Mrs. Ward?
Here.
Madam President?
Here.
So now we're at the election of officers, and the first officer to be elected will be the Board of Education President. So I'm going to read this into the record. The current officer's terms have ended. The election process will now be turned over to the Board of Education Secretary, who will lead the election process for the Board of Education President. Election procedures: nominations can be made by any Board of Education member and do not require a second. However, a motion to close nominations is required. Election will be by roll call. Although the Illinois School Code specifies Board of Education officers serve to your terms, the Board of Education of District U-46 has a Board Policy, Board Policy 2.210, limiting these terms to one year at any given time. So we'll start then with the opening of nominations for Board of Education President.
I nominate Donna Smith as Board President.
Are there any other nominations? If there are none at this point, we'll close, we'll need a motion to close the nomination period.
So moved.
Second?
Veronica, Ms. Nolan, and Ms. Kerr, wasn't it? So it's been, we're going to take a vote to close it. Mr. Costello?
Present.
Ms. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Present.
Madam President, I'm sorry, Ms. Smith. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
The I's have it, the S's have it, so it's five-two, it's closed.
Can I clarify? That was a motion, that was to close the nominations, not the nominations.
Now we're going to take a vote to elect Donna Smith for the position of President of the Board of Education. Ms. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Present.
Mr. Costello?
Present.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
The I's have it. Mrs. Smith has been elected as Board of Education President by five-two.
Thank you. The next office would be Vice President. I'd like to open nominations for Vice President.
Madam President, I nominate Sue Kerr for Vice President.
Okay, Sue Kerr. Any other nominations? Okay, I would like, could I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
It's approved seven-zero.
Okay, could I have a motion to elect Sue Kerr as Vice President? So moved. Melissa?
Second.
Mrs. Ward?
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
It's approved seven-zero.
Okay, the next position would be Secretary. In the position of Secretary, normally we have Mr. Rodriguez as our secretary. Could I have a motion to approve Mr. Rodriguez as the Secretary to the Board of Education?
So moved.
Second? Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead of myself. We need to open nominations.
I nominate Mr. Rodriguez for Secretary.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
I accept.
Any other nominations? Could I have a motion to close nominations for Secretary?
So moved.
Ms. Kerr?
Tracy. Tracy being.
Okay, now could I have a motion to elect?
You forgot.
We need a motion to, we need a vote under motion.
Vote to close. Go ahead, roll call.
Mrs. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm happily to announce that it's seven-zero.
Okay, but that's just a call.
The close, well, yeah.
And I did the first one so well. Now could I have a motion to elect Miguel Rodriguez as Secretary to the Board of Education?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Owens?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved seven-zero.
Okay, the next position is Secretary Protem. I'd like to open nominations for Secretary Protem.
I would like to nominate Veronica Nolan.
Any other nominations? Okay, could I have a motion to close nominations for Secretary Protem?
So moved.
Second.
Melissa and Jeanette. Roll call, please.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Nominations are closed.
Okay, could I have a motion to elect Veronica Nolan as Secretary Protem?
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Ms. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved seven-zero.
Okay, and the last position would be Treasurer. Could, I would like to open nominations for Treasurer to the Board of Education. This position is usually held by our Chief Financial Officer, so I guess I would ask Mr. King if he would accept the nomination. Dr. King, I'll get used to it. Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Could I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please.
I believe it's Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Nominations are closed.
Could I have a motion to elect Dr. Jeff King as Treasurer to the Board of Education?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Mrs. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Ms., Dr. King is Treasurer.
Congratulations, Dr. King. Okay, the next item on our agenda is IASB Governing Board Representative. Every year, IASB requests us to give them the name of one of our board members so that they could be the contact for IASB to keep us informed, and that board member would let the rest of the board know of anything that's going on that we would need to know. Do I have anyone who would like to do that? Sue? Okay. We will assign Sue to the IASB Governing Board Representative. Next item on our agenda is Work Session. Mr. Sanders?
Our first Work Session item is a resolution authorizing intervention in proceedings before the State of Illinois Property Taxes Appeal Board. This is an annual resolution that is brought forward to the board that Dr. King can give you a quick overview of. As Mr. Sanders mentioned, this is something that we bring forward annually to the board. We engage our current legal, outside legal counsel to intervene on our behalf when corporations file an objection to their property taxes. We do not file any objections against residents when they seek relief from property taxes. Typically, we intervene or we ask the law firm to intervene. It's typically some of the larger corporations that reside in our district, the banks are very typical applicants that we see annually, and again, some of the bigger retail operations in our school district. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Sue?
Dr. King, do we, how many of these do we see a year? Do you have a ballpark figure?
Twenty to thirty of them.
And do we, do we win some, lose some, both?
Typically, the way the process works, well, so this week, we settled on two and one dropped their appeal because after doing the assessment of the property, they didn't really have a case. So typically, what will happen is they'll hire someone to value the property on their behalf, they'll file their appeal, then we'll have a different firm do it on our behalf, and then there's a settlement negotiation that usually occurs.
And what kind of dollars are we talking about in terms, for us, in terms of tax dollars?
Well, I could tell you, over the past three weeks, we ended up refunding about $150,000 roughly. And in most of them cases, had we not fought the appeal, it would have been three or four times that amount.
Any other questions?
Who represents us in that? Forensic law firm does, yes. There's a particular lawyer at that law firm that we deal with in these situations.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Work session?
Our next Work Session item, our contract's over 25,000. Our first is Contract Renewal for Secondary Education with HERO. This is the truancy system that we, that used to be called Plasco, and was utilized by high schools for several years. Then it changed over to HERO, which provides a little more functionality that was presented to the board last year. Here to present, along with Mr. Chris Phelps, interim director of Business Services, is Dr. Lozier, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools and Instruction. Administration recommends approval of a one-year contract renewal with HERO for a total amount of $88,258.22, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. The expenditure will be charged to the educational fund, and it is included in the budget for the 2016-2017 school year.
Are there any questions? Sue?
Thank you for asking my questions earlier, but just for the audience, one of the things that HERO, we're just developing, I guess, the sort of the positive reinforcement part of it, and I know you said that we're still doing development and staff training on all of that. So could you just elaborate a little?
Sure, when we originally received Plasco, it was a tardy monitoring system only so that we could get students to class on time. Last year, they upgraded it to HERO, which became a way to monitor students still late to class, but also keep track of the positive things that students do. So in PBIS systems, we used to give away paper tickets. Now teachers can award points right from their computer screen for students wearing IDs or showing that they're using safety measures or other things. So we trained all of our staff first semester and rolled out some very basic ones, and then second semester, we asked to go school-wide across the whole area. We've been meeting monthly with our teams to make sure that they are implementing. Some of the schools actually make announcements and say, please award a positive point for every student who has their ID on in class or who has come prepared today. And then they can also redeem the points for prom tickets and other excursions.
Thank you.
How has the response been to that from the students? I mean, have they been enthusiastic, or is it something that?
Well, they're not so excited about us counting tardies, because if they're not to class on time, then there's a consequence. So typically, for every three tardies, there's a phone call home, or a letter, or an email. The cool thing about upgrading to HERO is that parents can download an app on their phone, and it will instantaneously notify a parent when a student is late to class. So when the parents download the app, we used to get a lot of calls right away wondering why. we used to get a lot of calls right away wondering why, you know, where's my student? Why wasn't he in class better yet? It's when the student got a text from a parent. The other thing, though, we also notify parents immediately when they receive positive points and when they've done something equally as well. So again, letters went home to parents explaining the app probably in November, and they're still getting used to it. What we tried to do this past summer was webinar and phone trainings. This year, we are actually bringing somebody in in July so that we can have face-to-face and more hands-on.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Oh, Casey, would you like?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something about the student kind of response to HERO. It hasn't been an overall negative response because we're used to having Plasco in the schools, but people just aren't really sure what to do with their HERO points because they know that it, you know, it marks them tardy, but they also get the positive points as well. And it's just, I don't know if it's just in my school, but I have heard some cases from across the district where people have been saying that they're not sure how many points that they have or how they've been getting them or how they can get more or even how they can redeem them. So I think that might be something that we could bring up to administration and staff in the different schools to kind of talk more about what you can do with HERO points as opposed to just receiving them and knowing that you have them.
Sure, so this year, Bartlett High School is a first-time PBIS school. So they are still trying to figure out their HERO economy and, you know, how many points you actually get for doing something and how many points that, you know, it takes to redeem something. So Mr. Demoski has been working with Barbetta's on what that economy looks like and how to use it. And I believe that next year, you'll have a much better plan.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next work session item are bids and proposals. Item A is a proposal for curriculum instruction, professional learning communities, professional development. Administration recommends approval of the one-year agreement with Solution Tree in the amount of $27,000 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. The expenditure will be charged to the Title I and Title II grant funds. If the board has additional questions, joining Mr. Phelps is Tricia Schroed, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Are there any questions? None? Okay, thank you.
Our next is a proposal for information services for district-wide cellular services. Administration recommends approval of a two-year contract with Sprint for a total amount of $119,971.22 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. The expenditure will be charged to the educational fund, and it is in the budget for this school year. If you have any additional questions, Mrs. Demoski has joined at the dais.
Are there any questions, Sue?
Do you have any idea why Verizon came in almost twice as much as Sprint?
They came, they overwhelmed the bid with the more pieces of equipment that we needed. But when we took a look at the overall, they still a lot higher. Their services are a lot, lot higher. Actually, we want to go back to and review, you know, what we paid and analyze what, you know, what type of services we got in the past as well. But moving forward, it became very high, their services. So we did a deep analysis, but they couldn't come back with it better.
Thanks. Any other questions? Jeanette?
So I didn't ask this beforehand, but I'm curious, who in the district gets to carry a cellular phone?
Well, we have, at least, we have the principals, we have IS, we have different type of cell phone services. We have the push-to-talk that plan operations use. We have, you know, Androids, we have iPhones, which we're going to actually standardize and come down with, you know, what do we really need? If we need them all, if we need more. So we're gonna try to standardize it more.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Item C is a bid for food nutrition services for packaging and supplies. Administration recommends award of the low-bid meeting specifications to Forms Plastics in the amount of $215,196.12 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. The expenditure will be charged to the Food and Nutrition Fund. If the board has questions, Ms. Phelps is joining Mr. Phelps at the dais is Bobby Phillips, Director of Food and Nutrition Services.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Next, we have Item D is a bid for plan operations for Elgin High School Gym Floor Removal. Administration recommends award of the low-bid meeting specifications to Ballard Technologies, Inc. for the contract sum of $202,000, which is for the base bid and alternate number one, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. The expenditure will be charged to the Capital Projects Fund and the Operations and Maintenance Fund. Here to answer any additional questions is Mr. Allen.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. Next item is public comments, and there are none. So could I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
We are.
Thank you.